Please, thank you. I'd like to go ahead and report out on our closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In closed session, the City Council was briefed on Item A and B, did give unanimous direction to staff, but the action that was taken is not a reportable action for Brown Act purposes. That is our report, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go ahead and adjourn our special meeting. I would now like to call to order our City Council meeting for February 18th, 2020. If I can get a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. I'd like to introduce Pastor Darrell Kelty from Community of Christ Church located at 9468 Broadway, Temple City, who will provide our invocation. Will everybody please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Before I start, I'm indeed honored to be here, both humbled because of the fine police officers and fire departments that are here today, and particularly for the Community Festival Court. In the early, early 50s, I marched in the parade. And I mean the early 50s. Let us pray. O divine Creator, we, your children, are gathered together this evening to conduct the business of this city of Temple City. We do so in order that we might make this community even better than it is already. We know that this will not be an easy task when one considers all the many problems and difficulties that we face. We know too that it's not something that we can do on our own without your divine support and guidance. It is for this reason that we offer this prayer to you this evening. May we see the world around us, in the community, as your divine creations, as we are its caregivers. We know that this is not something we can do lightly, but we need your help and guidance. Therefore, let this be our prayer to you this evening. That through what we do here tonight, tomorrow, the day following, and for the days hereafter, we may tap into your direction and may leave this community a better community than the way that we found it. This we pray in all humility. Amen.
Amen. If everyone will place their hand over their heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we have a very, very pack-filled evening, as you can tell. We're going to start off, first of all, with our presentation of our Camellia Festival Royal Court. And before I introduce our general chairman, I would like the council to join me in the front for the presentations. I'd like to now introduce Chairman for the 2020 Festival, Michael Wintercorn.
Thank you for inviting us tonight and for being the official sponsor of the Temple City Camellia Festival. While we have the most amazing committee volunteers, I want to thank the council and the city for its ongoing support of this Temple City tradition. The mission of the Camellia Festival is to promote the desire in every child to participate in the affairs of the community. It is through appearances like today that we are able to promote our local community organizations. So I'd like to begin by introducing our Camellia Festival Royal Court and banner carriers for 2020. Banner carriers Mason Cardenas and Hayden Wong. Royal Court Prince Kendrick Su and Princess Kaylin Yang. Prince Max Mantai and Princess Kelsey Jurek. King Colin Catalan and Queen Abigail Jane McKeon. These children were selected from a group of nearly 50 Temple City first graders who took part in our annual play day in January. They were judged on how they get along with others and following directions. And each, in addition, each child had a chance to answer questions using a microphone. Part of their royal duties includes opening our carnival, leading our Camellia Festival parade, and making special appearances such as this. Does anybody have any questions for them? Does the City Council have any questions for the kids? No? I know you've got a lot to do. Okay. What are you guys looking forward to? The carnival, good answer. At this time, I'd also like to introduce Don Tarran, our festival director. Jerry Jambezian, our parade program and photographer. And Ann Seitz, our royalty chairman, who keeps the kids in order. And I would also like to thank our parents for all their help in getting them prepared for today's appearance and all the appearances that they've been doing this week. Would the City Council like to explain what you guys do?
Well, what we do is we help make decisions for the government of the community, and we are hoping that someday each and every one of you will consider running for City Council and possibly will be mayor.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. Remember, this weekend is the carnival, with the parade on Saturday morning, 10:00 a.m. on Las Tunas Drive, and no rain, right?
No rain.
No rain, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you for that. That's something our City Council looks forward to every year, to see those wonderful faces. So, again, thank you to the parents. Several of us have had children on the court. We know it takes a lot of time to get them here and keep them looking nice and pretty by the time they get from the house to the car to here. So, I appreciate it. Okay, our next presentation is Firefighter of the Year. Fire Captain Ruben Ortiz has been selected as the 2019 Firefighter of the Year. Fire Captain Ortiz is an 18-year veteran of the fire department and has been assigned to Fire Station 47 for the last two years. I would like to call up Acting Assistant Fire Chief Jesse Vella to introduce Fire Captain Ortiz. And I also have here today with us Battalion Captain Frank, I'm sorry if I say this wrong, Infenti?
Infante.
Infante, thank you, is also with here, us today. So if we can have Fire Captain Jesse Vella, please?
Good evening. Thank you for having us, Mayor, City Council. Before I call Ruben up and introduce him, I'd just like to kind of point out a few things. When a person becomes a firefighter, his greatest act of bravery has been accomplished. What he does after that, the line of work, not every day is going to offer us a chance to save somebody's life, but every day offers an opportunity to affect somebody. As a firefighter, in every call for help that we answer, we have the ability to impact someone's life. As the Los Angeles County Fire Department goes, we do a pretty good job in providing a positive outcome. But that is what we're supposed to do. And I don't say that to lessen the means in any way. I say that to point out that there are certain individuals that sometimes go above and beyond. And that's the case with Captain Ruben Ortiz. Just a little bio on Captain Ortiz. He's currently assigned to Fire Station 47 here in Temple City, where he has proudly served the community for the past two years. As an 18-year veteran of the Los Angeles County Fire Department, he has served the communities of Calabasas, Woodyear, West Hollywood, Ballen Park, Norwalk, and Linwood. And I'm sure if you asked him what his favorite spot, he'd say that it is definitely the city of Temple City, right? Of course. Captain Ortiz was promoted to captain in the year of 2017, and he continues the attributes of a great leader. Throughout his career, he has been involved with various fire department programs that involve the community. But most importantly, I'd like to recognize the programs that I think have such a strong impact on the community. First of all is our Rescue Youth Program. Our Rescue Youth Program works closely with the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. They take individual children that are on the verge of going in either direction, in a right direction or sometimes that wrong direction. They mentor them, they team them up with an individual that has attributes of a good leader, a mentor, and they can lead them in the right direction. Captain Ortiz was involved as a rescue youth mentor for a number of years. Beyond that, he's involved in our Fire Explorer Program. Now, our Fire Explorer Program is probably one of the greatest programs that we offer. Don't think any illie of the program, but I'm a product of that program. I came up through that program. In high school, I remember the person that came up to me and gave me some direction that I might have not gotten anywhere else. Captain Ortiz has probably touched a lot of lives, and as a foundation for youth, that's huge. And he's been really involved in that. He's been a Fire Explorer Program advisor. Not only that, he's organized one of our annual fire department softball tournaments that raises, that's raised thousands of dollars in proceeds that benefit the Explorer Program. It takes a lot of time and effort to do that. When you really think about the future of our youth, somebody that's taken the time out to touch them, to mentor them, and to guide them, firsthand experience from somebody that did that to me, he's touched a lot of lives and children in this community. So, also, one of the things he's been involved in, as we're aware of, is our CERT training. So, he's a well-rounded leader that continues to give his time and efforts to others. So, with that, I'd like to thank him. And I know, Mayor, you were giving, you were trying to recruit potential mayors, but I think Ruben is going to stick around here long enough that he can probably be a definite good candidate for that role after he leaves here. So with that, I would just like to call up Captain Ruben Ortiz to say a few words on his behalf. Thank you, Ruben.
Thank you, Temple City Council members, for this award. This, like, I've been here for the last two years, and I've noticed how much hard work you guys put in, not just like the Camellia Festival, but they have the Relay for Life, you have the concerts in the park, and that's what the community witnesses. But there's a lot of hard work that goes behind even the everyday task. And I, you know, thank you for all the hard work, but this is a very special city, and that's why this honor is very special to me, getting it from Temple City. I just want to thank a few people. First of all, Chief Vella. He came into our division, and he's been a breath of fresh air. He is so supportive, so caring, and we really appreciate that, the guys. To his right is Chief Infante. All right. So 27 years ago, we went through Rio Hondo Fire Academy together, and that kind of kick-started my journey into becoming a fireman, and to this day, he's still a mentor, and I want to thank you for that. We also have my brother Roy. He's a fire captain for our department. He introduced me to this career, so I want to thank him. Thank you also for being a phone call away, talk about sports, work, anything. Thank you. I also have my sister, who used to dispatch for Montebello, so she knows how first responders, you know, the stress and everything that we go through, and her husband Rex, who's a police officer, and she's always there for me and my family when we need him. Just a few more.
Take your time, it's your moment.
So, I got here two years ago, new captain, new area, new position, I was nervous. But luckily, they gave me an all-star crew, and they're back there. And that crew includes care ambulance.
Where are they?
Can you stand up, my crew?
Yeah.
Some of them are standing up. And these guys, and as a new captain, that was gold, because they took good care of me, and they made me look good. Lastly, I want to thank my wife, Alex. Please stand up. I know Chief Vella mentioned all those programs I was in, and it takes a lot of time and time away from the family, and luckily, I have a great wife, who's not only my wife, but my friend, and she supported, her and the boys, my four sons supported me during those programs, even helped me out through the Explorer banquet or the softball tournament. I want to thank you, because I wouldn't be here without you guys. Thank you, boys, my four sons, I love you, I'm proud of you guys. Stand up, boys! Basically, I'm here because I have a great team, and I really want to thank them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, don't leave, don't leave. I just wanted to say how lucky Temple City is to have you, to have your dedication, to have your family's support, to have your colleagues here. You know, Temple City's a special place, and you mentioned that the City Council works hard, but we can't do this alone. We can't have a great community like Temple City without our fire department, without our sheriff's department, without everybody and our residents working to make sure that this community continues to be great. So, I wanted to say that first before I give you this. Okay, on behalf of the City Council, City of Temple City, Firefighter of the Year 2019, presented to Ruben Ortiz. This award is presented on behalf of the City Council and residents of Temple City in recognition of exemplary service to the community as a fire captain.
You said with the family?
Well, I'm not sure. He's in charge.
Let's get one with your colleagues?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, then I guess I can't come up there. Getting addicted to the color.
The council, too.
Oh, you know, it's, okay.
We should call.
And we can stand behind.
Call her, we'll call.
Well, we probably are all, we're all pictures.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't leave, don't leave.
Why are you in that person's, that will do?
Oh, no, wait a minute. Are they all leakers? Yes.
Yeah, hey, everyone, uniform, come on. Come on, Ruben, Roy. I'll do the family boy. Yeah, where is that? Yeah, there we go, there we go, perfect. Okay. Pointy toe, tilt your head. Go, go. First. Now they want the power. Yeah. 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 What was here is important. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
You guys can stay down there if you want. Okay, we're going to move on to our next award, which is our Deputy of the Year. Deputy Lamb has been with the Sheriff's Department for 14 years and has worked as the Temple City Special Assignment Team Deputy for the past five years. Here to introduce Deputy Lamb is Captain David Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. It's an honor for me to be here, especially to be able to talk about Van Lamb for just a couple minutes. I hope I don't embarrass you too much, but I think it's good if we learn a little bit about Deputy Van and his career. So he's a 14-year veteran of the Sheriff's Department, and after graduating from the Sheriff's Academy, he was assigned to Men Central Jail, where he worked there for about five years. In 2010, he came to Temple Station, completed our patrol training program, and as a patrolman, he earned a reputation for handling calls well, making arrests, and helping his partners. In 2015, he was selected to be the Temple City Special Assignment Deputy because of his strong work ethic, ability to interact well with the public, and being a team player. Initially, he was selected as the team's disaster coordinator, designated to work closely with the city in case of a major emergency, and he took this job very seriously. In fact, on his own time, he attended several training courses, and active shooter courses to be better prepared in case it was an emergency. So that's just the kind of guy he is. Now he's the area leader and area watch program coordinator. He works great with our station volunteers. He prepares a curriculum and hosts some meetings. It's a very successful program, and I appreciate all you've done for the residents of the city. And despite all this, he still hasn't forgotten good old-fashioned police work, so let's talk about that. He made several arrests, a great arrest in 2019. One, I was there just at the aftermath. He was the first to arrive at a major shooting incident and took the suspect into custody right away. You still had that critical incident look on your face when I got there, but I was happy you took him into custody right away and nobody else was hurt. He also arrested a habitual narcotics dealer who avoided being arrested during a search of his residence. But about a week later, Van saw him walking down the street and spotted him and took him into custody, so we had a drug dealer off the streets. And as long as I've known Van, he's gone beyond the call of duty. The city is a very strong supporter of public safety, and as you know, have helped hundreds of residents in helping to purchase the Ring Doorbell System. And so, one day, Deputy Lamb learned that an elderly resident needed help installing her Ring Doorbell System, and as a good partner does, captured him, and there he is. And so, free installation, apparently, so, you know, I'm sure the homeowner appreciates that. I think we all appreciate it, and this is another example of your dedication to duty to go above and beyond. Another thing, I don't know if you know I know this, but Van also created an Excel spreadsheet for our armory, so we're able to track things better because of his work. And so when he's not working, he enjoys spending time with, I think, is his greatest blessing, his beautiful wife Nicole and his kids, Thomas, Megan, and Joseph. You know, I often, well, not often, but when I first met his family, I thought, I thought I saw you. You know, when you go to the store and you see to buy a picture frame, that perfect family in there? That's what I saw. So Van, I have to say, I'm so proud of you. Congratulations, very well deserved, and thank you so much.
Well, I just wanted to say that I've known Van for many years, and the one thing I know about him, and I'm sure his family knows, he has this infectious smile. He walks in, and it's like, you never really know if he's had a bad day, or there's been some major crime or upset in the city, because Van walks in and he's just smiling, like everything's going really good, and then we get a report from our captain that something's happened, and we're like, really? Van looks so happy, like nothing, everything. So, I just appreciate that. I just want you to know that. I appreciate that, because I think we all need a smile once in a while, especially when things are going really rough, and you have a great, great smile. So thank you. And thank you, of course, for all your hard work. I do have an award for you. The City of Temple City Deputy of the Year Award 2019, presented to Van Lamb. This award is presented on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Temple City. This award is presented on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Temple City in recognition of exemplary service to the community as a deputy sheriff. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. The City Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I have two. The first one is Lucy. Lucy Lou, regarding Neighborhood Watch.
Yes. Hi, good evening. First of all, the deputy of the year couldn't have gone to a much more deserving person. Yes, we all know how hard he works. He literally sleeps at the station. And Thursday, he's got a big event, you know, our Area Two Neighborhood Watch meeting at the high school, 9501 Lemon Avenue in the media center. Meeting starts at 5:30. We'll be feeding the crowd, courtesy of the city. Street tacos, the best, you know? You just gotta get your doughs once a month, and the topics are new this year. We had the presentation and already January's meeting, and I have to tell you, the video that the team put together is an absolute eye-opener. A lot of us think that we know we're hiding or we're doing the right thing by deceiving the crooks, but, you know, us common citizens are no match for the thieves. So I really encourage everyone to come to this year's, every year's Neighborhood Watch meeting, we have something to share with you. There's a great video, people really need to watch this year. Again, 5:30 to 7:30, we have presentation from the city, and then we also have presentation from Brian Arizome, our Public Safety Supervisor, on disaster preparedness, because that topic is, you know, we live in earthquake country, so it's something that we cannot forget, we cannot get complacent of, and, you know, just come out for a great night to meet your neighbors, ask some questions, get some one-on-one. We have Deputy Chico, who's gonna be there, Sergeant Miranda, again Deputy Lam, who our mayor protest said you can't get him to shut up when he's at the meeting. Now, he's pretty good at sharing the speaking responsibilities, but it's a great night for all the residents. You don't have to live in Area Two. Our meetings are open to residents of the entire city. You can come to one, you can come to all 10 if you want, to find out about what's going on in other areas. If you missed a meeting, thanks to Jerry, you can watch it on templecityphotos.com. Watch this year's, watch last year's, I believe you have three years or four years' worth of videos on file. They are so full of information, please, if you have time, it's not a lot out of your day, just, you know, set alone, about an hour, hour and a half, watch those videos, or come to our meetings, you know, you'll walk away with a lot, a lot of information, so hope to see you all there Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Next, we have Martin.
First, I'll add my congratulations to Deputy Lam. I work in his office and share his computer, so I've gotten to see what a great leader he is. Reason I asked to speak tonight is, is I've identified a problem, and I talked to city staff about it, and that is abandoned shopping carts. There is a number to call, but they're very jurisdictional alert, that is, I live at the border between Temple City and County San Gabriel. They claim Burton Avenue is San Gabriel. I know it's in Temple City, so they don't wanna come. It takes three, four weeks, even if it's a shopping cart that they're responsible for. Since they only have an agreement with specified stores, they don't pick up at least 50% of the carts, so at the end of about a month, I then call the city staff, and the community development people send somebody to pick up the abandoned cart. The staff suggested that I talk to the council and see if there can't be some arrangement made with the contractor that is picking up the carts now. Perhaps if they pick up something that is from a non-contracted store, the city could then build the store for the pickup, something along those lines. But right now, Burton Avenue particularly regularly gets a load of abandoned carts, and as I said, it's a miracle if it's less than a month from the time it's called into the pickup people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Frank, are we looking into that, please? Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Okay. Oh. I was gonna say fill out a form, but you know.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. And I'm very happy to announce, and Temple City Library opened a new chapter, and the original library closed the first renovation and expansion last Wednesday, February 12. And I know City Council has been working very hard on this project, so finally it's happening. And our express library, thanks for the city, you know, the support from the city, gave us a property to work on, and it's officially open next Friday, February 14, on Valentine's Day, and we get our first customer, and he actually waiting in the parking lot half an hour before we open. So we took a picture with him. Valentine's Day is all our librarian, all female, so he looks very happy, surrounded by all the ladies. And so it's getting very busy, our express library, and which is located at 9050 East Lastula Drive, the old Chamber of Commerce site, and it's on the corner, Lastula's and Satana, it's had lots of parking space, so it's better parking situation than Temple City Park. So please visit us over there, and we have the same open hour, and since it's smaller, so our collection is concentrated, which means you always have the best stuff, the latest stuff, it don't need to go through all the collection, pick anything, it's brand new. So we will have, we'll continue our children's program, like the Smartypants Storytime, because we have a bigger space for the children's side. The adult side are pretty limited, we can input two computers, one Kindle computer and one printer, and then one study table, maybe can fit up two people, and we'll work with our librarian, with our region office, to find the creative way to continue our teen adult service. And I was thinking about, maybe we need to do more outreach, you know, bring the program to the people who gearing, you know, senior center, you know, maybe you were thinking Boba T shop or something, so right now we just want to try to get through it. And our book drop's still open for the library located in the park. Eventually, people still can return the book over here as a front, a bike already took away. Eventually, and we expect everybody will return the book to our express library or the Indian County libraries. And you can pick up your hose over there as well, so, yeah, any questions?
Well, thank you. We're excited, we're glad it's working.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments and move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Now going on to item eight, public hearing. Item A, adoption of urgency ordinance number 201039U to extend the moratorium prohibiting within the MUC zone public market uses and the subdivision of parcels and tenant spaces for 10 months and 15 days.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, before you tonight is an extension of the 45-day moratorium that was presented to you several meetings ago. During that presentation, Mr. Remers and staff provided you the justification and rationale behind that moratorium. Tonight, we ask for some more time to extend our study, understanding, and rationale behind that moratorium. Mr. Remers has a brief presentation for you for any questions that you may have, and Mr. Murphy is here for any legal questions that you may have about the moratorium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I just wanted to start off with the Crossroads Specific Plan and the vision of that plan, and that was to provide a diversity of housing options, a unique mix of shops, services, restaurants, and entertainment, to provide some open spaces to allow for different modes of transportation, to connect the development to the eat and wash, and to create an area that would be a sense of community pride. The way we were proposing to do that in the specific plan was to focus growth within the MUC zone, and that's the zone that's circled in the purple color. It's generally south of Las Tunas and west of Rosemead Boulevard. We centered on this district because it is very low in density presently. In this slide, the buildings are highlighted in a yellow color, so you can see there's a lot of open spaces amongst the buildings. That is, I live at the border between Temple City and County San Gabriel. They claim Burton Avenue is San Gabriel. I know it's in Temple City. So they don't want to come. It takes three, four weeks, even if it's a shopping cart that they're responsible for. Since they only have an agreement with specified stores, they don't pick up at least 50 percent of the carts. So at the end of about a month, I then called the city staff and the community development people, send somebody to pick up the abandoned cart. The staff suggested that I talk to the council and see if there can be some arrangement made with the contractor that is picking up the carts now. Perhaps if they pick up something that is from a non-contracted store, the city could then build the store for the pickup, something along those lines. But right now, Burton Avenue particularly regularly gets a load of abandoned carts, and as I said, it's a miracle if it's less than a month from the time it's called into the pickup people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Frank, can we look into that, please? Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Okay. Oh, I was gonna say fill out a form, but you know.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. And I'm very happy to announce, and Temple City Library opened a new chapter, and the original library closed the first renovation and expansion last Wednesday, February 12th. And I know City Council has been working very hard on this project, so finally it's happening. And our express library, thanks for the city, you know, the support from the city, gave us a property to work on, and it's officially open last Friday, February 14th, on Valentine's Day. And we get our first customer, and he actually waiting in the parking lot-
Oh, good.
-half an hour before we open.
Good.
So we took a picture with him. Valentine's Day is all our librarian, all female, so he looks very happy, surrounded by all the ladies. And so it's getting very busy, our express library, and which is located at 9050 East Lastola's Drive, the old Chamber of Commerce site, and it's on the corner, Lastola's and Satana. It's had lots of parking space, so it's better parking situation than Temple City Park. So please visit us over there, and we have the same open hour. And since it's smaller, so our collection is concentrated, which means you always has the best stuff, the latest stuff, it don't need to go through all the collection, pick anything, it's brand new. So we will have, we'll continue our children's program, like the Smartypants Storytime, because we have a bigger space for the children's side. The adult side are pretty limited, we can input two computers, one Kindle computer and one printer, and then one study table, maybe can fit up two people. And we'll work with our librarian, with our region office, to find the creative way to continue our teen adult service. And I was thinking about, maybe we need to do more outreach, you know, bring the program to the people who are gearing, you know, senior center, you know, maybe you were thinking Boba T shop or something, so right now we just want to try to get through it. And our book drop's still open for the, for the library located in the park. Eventually, people still can return the book over here as a front, a bike already took away. Eventually, and we expect everybody will return the book to our express library or the Indian County libraries. And you can pick up your hosts over there as well. So, yeah. Any questions?
Well, thank you. We're excited, we're glad it's working.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments and move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes.
Now going on to item eight, public hearing. Item A, adoption of urgency ordinance number 201039U to extend the moratorium prohibiting within the MUC zone public market uses and the subdivision of parcels and tenant spaces for 10 months and 15 days.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, before you tonight is an extension of the 45-day moratorium that was presented to you several meetings ago. During that presentation, Mr. Remers and staff provided you the justification and rationale behind that moratorium. Tonight, we ask for some more time to extend our study, understanding, and rationale behind that moratorium. Mr. Remers has a brief presentation for you for any questions that you may have, and Mr. Murphy is here for any legal questions that you may have about the moratorium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I just wanted to start off with the crossroads specific plan and the vision of that plan, and that was to provide a diversity of housing options, a unique mix of shops, services, restaurants, and entertainment, to provide some open spaces, to allow for different modes of transportation, to connect the development to the eat and wash, and to create an area that would be a sense of community pride. The way we were proposing to do that in the specific plan was to focus growth within the MUC zone, and that's the zone that's circled in the purple color. It's generally south of Las Tunas and west of Rosemead Boulevard. We centered on this district because it is very low in density presently. In this slide, the buildings are highlighted in a yellow color, so you can see there's a lot of open spaces amongst the buildings. We also proposed to focus growth here because it's buffered from the single-family zones, and because there's some large parcels that will make a larger cohesive development easier. One of the goals of the specific plan is to create a cohesive district in corridors to integrate the uses within the district. The challenge is that even though we have some large parcels and some large buildings that could make cohesive and integrated development achievable, the specific plan does not have a minimum tenant size or a minimum parcel size. So these subdividing these, either the buildings or the lots into smaller pieces, could pose a threat to creating that cohesive type of development that we were looking for in the specific plan. The moratorium that's before you tonight not only talks about subdivisions of tenant spaces and land, but also public market uses. A public market use is kind of a new thing that we're seeing. It tends to be a creative, fun, experience-focused destination. It can combine food, retail, entertainment. Usually, it's made up of a set of smaller spaces or booths that are combined into a larger whole. A local example is Indiana Colony in Pasadena, it's a smaller example. Grand Central Market in Los Angeles is a larger example, and then Steel Craft in Long Beach is kind of an outdoor-indoor example. So it comes in a lot of different forms. The concern about this use is that it could be a possible alternative to subdividing this space, so we wanted to make sure that was covered. And then we felt that it was necessary to create some regulations for this use to make sure that we get a type of public market that the community would support. Since the original moratorium, we've been doing some research on how other cities look at subdivision of space. We found that generally, cities in the West San Gabriel Valley have a minimum tenant space size of 800 to 1,000 square feet. Cities in the East San Gabriel Valley generally have a minimum tenant size. A few cities have, require a conditional use permit if someone wants to subdivide a tenant space or create a multiple-tenant commercial structure. Another city reported that they require one anchor tenant with a certain percentage of the floor area, so if you wanted to subdivide a large commercial space, a certain percentage of that commercial space would have to be given over to one tenant. And then we need some additional time to research some additional standards here, but then also to look at how you would differentiate an excellent public market use from an indoor swap meet. So we need some more time to look at how we would define that in the code and what regulations would need to be put into place. Since the staff report and agenda were posted, we received comment from the BH Properties, which owns the lease with Kmart. They asked us to make a modification to one of the items. We've been speaking with them, and we've, we as staff have come to an agreement in supporting one recommended change to the ordinance, and that's under A2, and that would be to add a sentence that says, "This provision is not intended to prevent the lease or use of the building in its current configuration." It should probably say the use of buildings in their current configuration. So there will be a process where we need to go do some additional research. We'll then meet with community members and property owners, we've been meeting with some already. From there, we'll prepare some draft regulations and meet with the planning commission and come back to you with a final recommendation on this ordinance. With that, staff's recommendation is to introduce read-by-title and wait-for-the-reading of the urgency ordinance extending this moratorium to 10 months and 15 days. With that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, just before we get started, just a reminder, legally, if staff is able to undertake that process faster than 10 months and 45 days, if they can get meetings with the property owners, get out to the public, and then bring regulations back to the commission and you faster than that, then the ordinance that you adopt putting the new regulations in place will also cause the moratorium to terminate. So the more input staff can get, the more quickly, the better they can do their research, and the faster the moratorium would end if you do all choose to extend it tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any council questions for Mr. Remer?
About this specific site?
I had asked our city manager, and we haven't had a chance to speak before the meeting regarding that, but I had a question just in regards to the Kmart site, the adjacent, what is the company that operates the car repair?
It's a Crown, is it Crown City Automotive, I think?
Oh, yeah. If, with the current ordinance as-is, that section that is over there separate from the actual Kmart building, that area would not be able to be subdivided or subleased either?
That's correct, yeah. So they could not take the existing automotive facility and subdivide it into multiple tenant spaces, that's correct.
Okay.
I have a question. The Crown Automotive, is that a separate owner?
There is, it's a separate business, yes.
It's a separate business, but is it-
It's a separate business, it's owned by the same prop, I'm sorry. It sits, one property owner owns the entire structure for Kmart and the automotive facility.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Isn't the automotive connected to the Kmart building? It's not, two buildings, right? Are we talking about two different buildings?
No, 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 no.
It's all one building.
It's all one building, one owner.
It's just on the north side of the building, yeah.
Correct, but a separate business.
It's a separate business, yeah.
It's a separate business, correct. Same owner. Okay. Did we have any other-
Madam Mayor, I have just one quick, for Mr. Remer. Now, Mr. Remer, how many of the owners have, have you reached out or they reached out to you?
We've been able to contact, I think, four property owners. We've, I've spoke, I'm sorry, four, five, six, I think six property owners. Mostly, we've been targeting those with the larger units that would more likely be subdivided. And then we've also have existing relationships, so it's easier to communicate with some of them rather than others.
And how many owners total are there?
I don't know off the top of my head, because there's, the MUC district includes some uses further west and on various, on smaller parcels, so it's probably around 30 property owners.
And one last question, and just to be clear in my mind also, the ordinance doesn't, it allows, like say for example, the Office Depot business, it could, potentially a similar business could come in under this moratorium if, say, Office Depot went out of business and it wasn't subdivided. They could still-
Correct.
-lease that for a single-use business, correct?
Right, right. So another retailer could replace the retailer, that would not be a problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Actually, a follow-up comment.
Okay.
So a follow-up comment to Councilmember Sternquist. So following that same line of thinking, that means, that means we would only, we would be looking at the uses of that specific building under the current newly adopt, or it's not new anymore, but our current general plan and specific plan. So any, any uses that are not listed within the specific plan would not be allowed in the existing space?
That is correct. If there was a use in the use table that was prohibited, they would not be allowed in that area.
So what if someone's proposed to, say, use the existing structure and somehow convert it to a mixed-use?
The, this, this ordinance, in fact, actually doesn't apply to mixed-use projects. So if they did want to come through with a development project that was a mixed-use development, they could subdivide tenant spaces to do that.
If it was for mixed-use?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And someone could potentially, an owner in the middle section, could start a mixed-use project there, separate from the others on the end, or the one on the end could start without having to, I don't know what's the word, but they could do that independently of the other two.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you get that?
Yeah, I get it, I just didn't realize that.
I didn't know if I asked.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Okay, Jerry?
Good evening, Jerry Jambezen. Just one question, can it be renewed after one year? I think things move kind of slow sometimes, and I'm wondering, can it be renewed, or does it sunset after this one time?
Yes, Mr. Jambezen, Madam Mayor, council, this can be renewed at the end of a year for an additional year, so the total could be two years. I know that that's not staff's goal with this. The idea is to get something put in place quickly to serve the community, but if it were to be renewed, staff would have to come back to the council with an explanation as to why the 10 months and 15 days was not enough time to get, get this taken care of. Thank you, sir, for asking.
Okay, I guess I have one more follow-up question. Is there a possibility that it could be split in half? Is there that option, or it's one business, one owner, or nothing?
Well, can I clarify-
For the Kmart property?
No. Go ahead, you can answer.
So the, the proposed moratorium affects not just the Kmart site, it affects everything south of Las Tunas and west of Rosemead Boulevard. It might be possible to modify the ordinance to reduce the scope, but it would generally not advisable to reduce it to one singular property owner.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Sir? I just need your name, your address.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Albert Cho. I'm from BH Properties, I'm the asset manager for the company, so I probably could provide more information. So we're a real estate company that, you know, invests in retail, office, mixed-use, and so I happen to manage, oversee the locations that our owner has in the local California locations. And this past December, through the bankruptcy court with the Sears Holdings, they're, they were planning on selling all their land or, you know, remaining terms of lease to minimize their loss. And so we, you know, opted to take over the Kmart master lease. You know, the location, and we saw the location is great, great visibility, and so we had intended to originally lease that space back up. We typically, when we take over, we like to invest and put some capital to improving the facility, and then we connect with local brokers to be able to kind of find national retail, you know, tenants to really, you know, revamp the building. And so one of the things I wasn't aware of until January, you know, originally I contacted the city to just kind of get some more input and feedback on what their thoughts were as we were working on trying to find a prospect, and then that's when I found out that there was this moratorium that was set for 45 days, and then there was going to be another extension for another 10 months. And so I just wanted to share the challenge of that, because we, we went in this thinking that we could take over and then eventually find another user to take over, but based on the moratorium, it would stop from, you know, having a 90 square feet, you know, to lease that whole space up, there's, there's not many users for that. And so I understand that there's a discussion of the size, and so in order to kind of expedite this moratorium period, because we still have obligations to pay the landlord, as well as the property tax and CAM, and so as these moratorium gets extended, that's, that just kind of puts a heavier financial burden on us. And so one of the things is, I know public marketplaces was one of the concerns, and I think we're, so we, on the Kmart, we have 18-year term. So we don't own the land, we purchased the existing Kmart lease that has an 18-year term remaining, and so our hope was to be able to lease, find a user for an 18-year period, or whatever less, to be able to backfill that location. So, so that's kind of our situation, and obviously, we would need to coordinate and work with the landlord. But, but with that said, I think, I think we want to kind of share the commitment that I see that the city has this goal in mind, but in doing so, we're willing to concede that we won't lease to a public marketplace. And then the other thing is, is I know there's a minimum size requirement that, that's in consideration, and I think, given the size, most likely, we would just subdivide probably three, two at max, or maybe just one, and then find a minimum size of 20,000 square feet or greater. So it, it wouldn't hopefully hinder the goal of what the city is trying to achieve in, in terms of their specific crossroad plan. You know, and so I just wanted to kind of get your feedback, you know, in terms of where, where you stand as you kind of extend, because if it does get extended for 10, you know, to the end of the year, that means that we're pretty much at a loss for the whole year, and we're just gonna be, you know, have this, having this obligation that we have, we have to continue to pay, and, and, and just kind of sit tight. And so my hope is to kind of get some more direction where, you know, where kind of the city council members stand on this issue, and then, you know, being aware of our circumstances where we have, you know, we have, we intended to kind of improve the location and try to kind of, you know, hopefully, you know, find a user to kind of backfill this Kmart spot.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Improve it how?
So-
With one tenant, or do you plan on chopping it up?
So, so far, our, our idea was, a lot of the prospects that we've worked with or received based on marketing the, the location, a lot of them are looking for somewhere between 20 to 25, 30,000 square feet. There's a few that are maybe 50, 60,000 square feet, different type of use. You have different entertainment prospects, maybe like Hobby Lobby type of users, at-home furniture. So we, we've gotten a lot of, quite a bit of interest for this facility, which, which then-
But nobody signed anything.
No one, well, so that was the thing, once we found out about the moratorium, it really kind of put a hold on everything, because without the revision that was proposed tonight, it almost stated like, you know, we're not gonna allow for subdivision, we're not gonna allow for any new user to lease until, you know, you know, you're able to decide on how you want to proceed with the ordinance and, and planning. So that's why it's so important for us to really kind of, you know, understand where the city stands on this, because as we're getting these prospects and interest, you know, if, if the, if the city passes, hey, we're not gonna allow for any type of use, then our hands are pretty much tied.
Well, I don't think the city is saying we're not going to allow any type of use. I think the purpose of the moratorium is to determine what those uses are going to be in compliance with our, with our larger goal of our specific plan, and that's why it's kind of a step-by-step process. So when you ask us, well, what, where are we at, I think you've just heard where we're at by the presentation given to us by Mr. Remers.
Yeah, yeah. So one of the things is, is, I guess it would, it helps in one aspect, given that if we add that proposed language, then we're able to lease up the space, the whole space, but, but then at the same time, to lease up a 90,000 square feet, it is, it is challenging. If it, if it was, you know, 25,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet, not, not an issue. I think a lot of, you know, prospects that we do get are like around 20, 25,000, but once you go beyond that, you know, and going to 90,000 square feet, it is, it is, it is pretty challenging.
And that could very well be the recommendation, we don't know at this point.
Right.
So that remains to be seen, and I think that's the, I don't, the way I understand it is, we're not just saying no, we're just saying, we want to take a good look at it before we make this final determination, like we like to do, and that is make well-informed decisions rather than just, you know, off the cuff, so.
Okay.
And, and I appreciate the, the request, I think that was put in the, in the ordinance about, you know, it just doesn't affect if you want to, you know, do what's there now, obviously. We're not prohibiting that as well, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You had a question, Councilmember Sternquist?
No, I just wanted to share, because you asked, you know, you were interested in finding out what the council stance is on, on the, you know, the property, and I think the city made a huge investment in the specific plan, and the council approved the specific plan, so what is in the specific plan is the buy-in from, from the council, and I think what it does is, is it gives us time to look more specifically at, you know, what we want, and, you know, real estate investment, as you know, is always a tricky, a tricky business, because you can buy a property today and tomorrow it either goes down or, or sky-high, so that's just the nature of, of real estate, but I definitely understand your predicament and, you know, understand that it is a challenge, but I think there's, we have a challenge in looking at that entire property and trying to see how we can move forward with a specific plan that our community worked for a very long time and staffed to get to that point. So what's in the specific plan is what the council has bought into, but we want to spend time looking, I think, at more specifically, you know, what's available, not only to the property owners, to help us meet that specific plan and how we can work with them, because I think that is a goal that's of primor, primary importance to us also, is how do we work with the property owners? It's a very unique parcel, because there are so many, you know, different owners, so it's probably one of the more unique properties that you probably even, you know, do a lease with. So it is challenging, I think it's challenging for our city, for, definitely for our staff, but the goal is to work with the property owners primarily, to see how we can meet that vision of what the community wants in the specific plan.
Okay. And, and so I guess the, the other question I had is, I know is, is a different set of parcels with different land, landowners, and the landowners have a certain obligation, well, obligation to the existing tenants. Like, I know there's a CVS, and there's some larger restaurants where there are existing lease terms remaining, and sometimes it could be 10 years with option periods and, and so forth. So, and in our case, we have an 18-year term, and so I was just wondering, like, how, like, this specific plan, is, is it a, a five-year goal or 10-year goal, and, and, or a 20-year goal? Because, you know, factoring what's there- Because, you know, factoring what's there, it may be not something immediate. And given that we have an eighteen-year lease obligation, is one of those things that may be difficult. Because if, as you approach the landlords, you know, they're going to first have to deal with the hurdles, even if, first, they need to be on board with the vision. And if they are, then they would have to then, you know, see what their existing obligations are to the existing tenants. And given that, you know, most of the small shops, they're usually a three- to five-year, you know, term. But when it comes to these big, larger retail boxes, I know that there are, you know, option periods and longer lease terms that would need to be addressed. So, was that kind of factored in to the consideration?
Well, I think that's definitely something that the study would help give us some more information and some more understanding because, you know, individually, I mean, I try and educate myself as much on land use and investment in real estate because that's my interest, always has been. But someone else, you know, so we learn as we get information. And the best way for us to get information is through having study periods and, you know, time to really evaluate how we can accomplish those goals. And to just rush into, you know, now, I mean, I see this as an opportunity for our city that Kmart went out of business also. I know it's a challenge for property owners and leasing, people who are leasing the property. But, you know, my goal as a city council member is always to do what's best for the community. And the community spoke pretty loud and clear through all that studying of the specific plan.
And I just wanted to add one thing.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, just to say, we've had some back and forth with this particular public speaker. I would just ask that we not state positions yet as to kind of where this is going. And we're at about thirteen minutes with this speaker, so I just want to advise that if other speakers want to have similar back and forth, we may have to kind of give them the same amount of time. So, maybe we want to wrap it up with this speaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was there anything, any other? I just wanted to just quickly say that part of this ten-year study is going to obviously include what is going on on that property and what the term leases...
Ten months, doesn't it?
Ten months, I'm sorry, ten years. Ten months.
Feels like ten years.
Obviously, we're going to take that into consideration. You know, the city council, we have been talking about that property for many years. We only found out in December that Kmart was going out. And that's only two months ago. And all of a sudden, it was like, wow! I mean, it was like, we found out probably in two days. No, but no one, it wasn't like they called us six months ago and said, hey, we're going out in December. They put a sign up and they said, we're going out.
Right.
So, all of a sudden, we had to make a decision. That's why we did the original moratorium because it was like, we have to do something now because we know what we want, we know what the community wants for that, for that particular property, but we can't wait. And like I said, we really, we have had no time to study it. That's why we want the ten months. So, and again, I also, I also understand your position. But it is the largest property in Temple City as far as a development property. So, we have to take that into consideration.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, so if we want to, if I want to keep the dialogue, I know we're short on time, but if, I want to be able to kind of have the dialogue about this issue, is this, what would be the best way to address?
Contact our city manager, or Scott.
Okay.
Scott would be very helpful. He can give you his card.
Yeah, and Scott's been very helpful in being informative and all that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public hearing, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close public comments. Council questions or comments?
I guess I said it.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question, actually, to the speaker's point of, I think I heard him saying that I tried to, he would try to avoid the public market concept. I'm not sure that was the intent of this study. So, I actually wanted Mr. Remer to perhaps clarify the intent. And while we may not have a totally completed vision of what this public market concept is, but I don't necessarily think that our goal is to prohibit public market. Am I correct?
Right. I think we wanted to take a look at the public market use, what is the right way of doing it? And what are some best practices that are out there on making sure that we get a high-quality one, if we get one at all? So, at this point, we're not looking at prohibiting, but what is the best practices?
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? No? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Fish, I'll move to introduce, read by title and way further reading, and that we adopt urgency ordinance number twenty-one zero-three-nine-U extending the moratorium, prohibiting within the mixed-use commercial zone, public market uses, and the subdivision of parcels and tenant spaces for ten months and fifteen days.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. We're going to be moving on to item B, adoption of urgency ordinance number twenty-one zero-four-zero-U to establish regulations for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in compliance with State Government Code Section six-five-eight-five-two-dash-two and six-five-eight-five-two-dash-two-two.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, Ms. Lu, our assistant planner, will walk you through the ordinance. This is not something the city's doing, this is what the state of California is doing. And we are trying our best, and we will take the process, to try our best, as was discussed with you during the legislative update earlier this year, to try to maintain as much local control as we can. We've exercised a lot of review, took some of you, took your discussion that we had during the legislative update into account as well. And what we have before you today is the urgency ordinance as we make some steps through to try and both comply with state law, but also do our best to maintain some level of local control going forward. So, with that, Ms. Lu.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Honorable City Council. As you may be aware, that the state has passed the six laws in last year, which would further impact the city's capacity of regulating ADUs. The state also requires that we modify the zoning code to comply with their law. And after the zoning code is modified, we have to submit the modified zoning code to the state within sixty days of its adoption. So, as you know, we adopted the first ADU ordinance three years ago, allowing ADUs in R1 Zone at a maximum of eight hundred square feet. What the six laws passed last year requires is to require the city to make major changes to the ADU ordinance to include the following. First one is to not only allow ADUs, but also allow JADUs, junior ADUs, in R1 Zone and for a potential of a total of three units for each property. And ADUs currently, the zoning code allows in R1 Zone, the state requires that ADUs must be allowed in all residential zoned districts, including mixed-use zone. And the city cannot continuously require a minimum lot size for the construction of ADUs or JADUs. And when a garage or parking space is converted or removed for the construction of ADUs, the city cannot require replacement parking. The list continues. The city can now require a detached ADU to have a more than four-feet side and rear yard setback. Our current standard is ten feet for the rear...
It can be four feet, yeah.
Cannot be more than four feet. Has to be four feet or less.
It's currently ten.
Currently, it's a five on the side yard and ten feet on the rear yard. And our current standard is ADU can be up to eight hundred square feet. The state law requires the city must allow a minimum of eight hundred square feet. The maximum can be twelve hundred square feet, but the city can establish a maximum of one thousand square feet, which is what we are proposing in the urgency ordinance. In addition, the city cannot use floor area ratio, lock coverage, and open space to prohibit construction of ADUs, which is at least eight hundred square feet. And the city can now require the property which has an ADU to be owner-occupied.
Actually, I have a quick question, if I may, Madam Mayor. So, obviously, our zoning code, current zoning code without the ADU dictates a certain maximum dwelling size on a lot. Now, is it conceivable that somebody will build a maximum, let's say, thirty-five hundred square feet? I think, I believe that's a max we allow in Temple City. And then turn around, build another thousand feet in ADU afterwards, so, and result in a forty-five hundred square foot, I mean, not to mention all the enhancement that we could allow. I mean, so, is that possible?
That's how some cities interpret this law. That's not how we interpret the law. What the law says is basically what's on that bullet point, that fourth bullet point there, which is FAR lock coverage and open space cannot prohibit an ADU. So, it would be conceivable to take the existing structure at thirty-five hundred square feet, convert the ADU, or create an ADU within that structure. You still get the ADU, you're not adjusting FAR lock coverage in that circumstance. So, the way we interpret that would be, yes, you can have an ADU on your property, but you need to do it within the structure.
Within the allowable square foot. So, we're not going to create mega measures, if you want.
That's correct.
So, the ADU has to be within the thirty-five hundred square feet?
Yes. So, the way we interpret the law is that would, that interpretation would allow what I'm saying.
And they can, and they can do two ADUs on a lot?
They can do an ADU and a junior ADU.
Oh, okay. So, when you say, in your bullet points, when you say for a total of three units, that would be one ADU, one JADU, and then, of course, the primary resident. And none of them combined can exceed the thirty-five hundred square feet?
As long as they could, I cannot think of a way in which you couldn't do all three within thirty-five hundred square feet.
No, but I mean, that's the maximum.
Yes.
So, in other words, it's adventing, just I want to understand. You have a thirty-five hundred square foot house, you're not going to be able to allow, we're not going to allow two one-thousand additional structures on it.
That's correct. The JADU has to be within the existing structure anyway, so we're covered on that. But the ADU, as long as they can locate it within the structure, there's no reason to allow them an additional eight hundred square foot.
And I will say that Mr. Remers and his staff are taking an aggressive stance to protect local control in this, in this case. And this is part of why we want to do an urgency ordinance now, put these measures in place, and really monitor what the State's Department of Housing and Community Development is doing to make sure that we haven't done a full permanent ordinance, and then we have to come back and change it again. So, the urgency ordinance as an interim measure is a very good idea, and we'll keep monitoring and then bring back final standards.
Mayor Fish, can I ask a follow-up question to Councilmember Yu? So, am I understanding this correctly? You're saying what we're proposing right now to meet state requirements is that if you have an existing thirty-five hundred square foot main residence, and they come back and say, I want to do a separate unit that's a thousand square feet, we would say no because you've already met your thirty-five hundred?
Yes, basically, that is correct. What the state law says is FAR cannot prohibit the location of an ADU. In that case, FAR is not prohibiting the location of the ADU because you could easily place the ADU within the structure.
What if the separate structure was an existing garage that they proposed to convert? That was a thousand square feet.
Yeah, we, I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I would be willing to bet they would, you would have to do that.
I would too.
Because you've got a garage, and they say you can convert a garage.
All right, and you don't have to...
And that doesn't count in the square footage.
You don't have to provide parking, right? Anymore.
All right, so I guess that's where, there's a, and probably there's a lot of confusion about that, so I'm not expecting great clarity tonight. But it's just one of those things that seem like they're in constant conflict with each other. And we say we can restrict it by making them fit the ADU within the main structure, but yet there's this other scenario where the state seems to be implying that if it's a separate structure, like a garage, then you can't deny them. So, I'm trying to figure out how those two kind of, they seem like they don't reconcile very well together.
And this is the difficulty, especially with the legislation we've received, is that it has been very difficult for the cities, the attorneys, and even the state's attorneys to understand what was meant in the law. And then to place that over a multitude of cities within the state and ask them to try to implement it, a lot of cities are implementing it differently. So, we'll probably need the time to figure out how this specific ordinance applies to our jurisdiction, and then interpret it, and then come back to you with ordinances to codify those interpretations.
All right, thank you.
Scott, I have a question. Can you remind me, can you have more than one JUD on a...
No, you're only allowed one JADU on a single-family property.
On a, okay. I couldn't remember. Okay, thank you. But you can, but you can have both, three.
Yeah, you can have an ADU and a JADU.
Okay, but you can't have two. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the city cannot impose impact fee for ADUs less than seven-hundred-fifty square feet. If an ADU is over seven hundred square feet, the impact fee has to be charged proportionally comparing to the primary dwelling. So, and then, an example of this is, the city currently is charging park fees at five hundred dollars. So, the proper way of doing it is to charge maybe fifty percent of that amount for an ADU. That probably will be incorporated in the zoning code tax amendment when staff bring the code amendment back to you.
Is that the only impact fee we have is a park impact fee?
We have a park, school, school fee as well.
Well, school, we don't collect, it's a school, this we get to collect. Yeah, yeah, so we don't collect that.
And the approval process states requires, we already installed, implemented, is that an application of ADU must be approved ministerially. And after the completion of the application, the city must approve the application within sixty days review period.
Hestie, to Councilmember Yu's point, can you charge a different impact fee? Are some cities charging, like, sore impact fees to, for ADUs?
The state law requires, if you're not charging the impact fee on the primary dwelling, you cannot charge it on the ADUs.
Of course. That would be too easy.
And state law further provides that, and when a property has some legal non-conforming conditions, the construction of an ADU or proposal of an ADU should not, the city could not require the project to correct the non-conforming conditions. The last one is, in some single-family, Temple City doesn't have many of those development, called planned development, in R1 Zone, which has HOA in place, or C and R. Those cannot be used to prohibit the construction of ADUs anymore.
What is a single-family HOA? I've never heard of that before.
If you think about, say, the city of Santa Clarita, so it's a single-family dwellings, five hundred houses on the hill, they'll have an HOA.
Oh, so the whole...
Right, the same way that like Olson's group.
Like a planned community.
Right.
Well, at least there's a...
Urbine. Yes, sir.
Well, I think we have some smaller ones in our city, maybe seven, eight units.
Sometimes when we develop those little cul-de-sacs, I guess.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is there one on La Russa?
Yeah, there's one in La Russa, right.
Yeah, with a little cul-de-sac.
Okay.
So, with those requirements, the only question left is, what can we regulate? The state allows the city to continuously regulate ADUs based on the water and sewer diff... deficiency, and the city can continuously regulate architecture and landscaping design based on objective standards. And last one is any standards that are applicable to the primary dwelling, which does not prohibit ADUs, which are, can be reviewed ministerially, and which are consistent with the state law can be continuously enforced, such as the front yard setback.
Okay, hold on a second.
Oh, that is fire.
I smell fire.
Smells like fire.
I see smoke, actually.
Where?
Is it smoky out there, or is it just me?
And all our firefighters already left.
Doesn't it look smoky out there?
Smells like fire.
Is it something in the...
Something's burning.
Maybe check the back room and see.
It is smoky in here, but we should...
No, over there, I can see smoke.
Maybe it's a chicken.
Somebody put in a microwave.
It's so spicy, it's self-ignited. Maybe it's the HVAC.
Ms. Lou. The essence of what we've gotten in terms of the ordinance is there.
Now I smell it again.
Both to approve.
Okay, I smell it again.
Because I smell smoke now, again.
Thank you.
I approve it.
Okay, let's just go.
Can we have a second?
Okay.
We need public...
Oh, Jerry's here? I'm sorry. Go ahead and open public, the public hearing. Close public hearing. Council questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
To, motion to approve the ADU number... I can't see it.
Wait, you have to do the, you have to do the thing.
I don't have my, somebody took my papers.
Let me do it. You want me to do it?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, I make a motion that we introduce and read by title, waive further reading and adopt urgency ordinance number 20-1040U to establish regulations for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in residential and mixed-use zones.
Second? Are you going to second? Second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, unfinished business.
In light of Mayor, Mayor Fish, in light of the existing issue with the building, there's nothing absolutely urgent, I can bring this back at another, another time as well. We will be talking about transportation issues in the future related to transportation funding.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to item 10, new business, none. Update from city manager.
None, none tonight.
Update from city attorney?
Not tonight, thank you.
Council reports regarding ad hocks or standing committees?
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, we, the facilities and public work standing committee that Councilmember you and I are part of did meet recently with staff regarding the Primrose Park concepts. We went over a lot of the, we, we basically talked about what should be, what, what should be the items that should be part of the base bid for, for Primrose Park. We talked about outlining different scenarios. In the worst-case scenario that we don't receive the state grant, so that we, council has at least different options to consider. Base bid, à la carte items, you know, talk about phasing, how would the phasing work?
Thank you.
And where that money, where the monies would be impacted if we were to go down that route. I don't know if Councilmember you wants to add?
Yeah, I think the, the whole, the whole thrust of that discussion was to, while we're waiting for the state's decision, we don't want to just stay idle, we want the process to move ahead. Want to, the, we want to come back to the council to ask, to get final council's decision on what the future design might look like, and give the council alternatives like that Councilmember Mann was saying. So as soon as we hear from the state, then we can move forward.
Yes. Thank you, I think it's a great idea.
Save some time, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other reports? Okay, council item separate from city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember you.
Nothing to add in light of...
Councilmember Mann?
I just want to say I'm looking forward to the Camellia Festival.
Excellent. Councilmember Sternquist?
I'm looking forward to Camellia Festival, that's it.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
No, just hoping for some good weather this weekend, I'm sure we'll get it.
Great. I just want to say I am also, of course, looking forward to this weekend, and I'd like to thank all of my colleagues. This is actually going to be my last council meeting as mayor. We will have our State of the City next Tuesday, and then after that, we'll have our reorganization, where we will name our new mayor. I'm going to move on to item 15, recess to accessory agency. Regular meeting, a 2000, a regular meeting of February 18th, 2020. Can I get a roll call of the chairman, please?
Agency member Mann?
Here.
Agency member Sternquist?
Here.
Agency member you?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairwoman Fish?
Here. Consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second? Okay, item four, unfinished business, none. New business, none. Communications, none. Open public hearing, or, I'm sorry, public comments. Closing public comments. Update from executive director and agency counsel?
None.
None tonight.
None. Matters from agency members? None. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our accessory agency and redevelopment agency. Going back to our regular meeting, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda? None. I'm going to go ahead and close public comments, and we are adjourned. Thank you.